Let's see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Do the prayer.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are and that you are our God. Well, we just thank you for this city and the residents in this city. Well, we just ask that you're with us today as we do the best for our city that we possibly can. Help us and guide us as we endeavor to do that. We sing and pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Now, we are going to have a proclamation for child abuse prevention month. So we have Ms. Talen Rushing here with us tonight. And Talen, do you want me to read the proclamation first before you speak, or do you want to speak first? Of course. Okay. Talen Rushing has the floor and she's going to say some words for child abuse. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Yes. So, good evening, Council and Mayor Buckskemper. Thank you so much for having me here today. I appreciate you taking the time and adding me to your agenda. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. So, I am the President of the Hockley County Child Welfare Board, and we are looking to get ourselves out there more, make people more aware of what we do as a board. So, basically, we supplement DFPS and St. Francis, who is our housing contract in this Region One of Texas. So, we help purchase Christmas and any other type of requests that they have. Just an example is, a couple of weeks ago, we had a grandmother who had a child who was kind of transitioning from that baby stage to the toddler stage, and we were able to get her a bigger car seat and the bedding and things like that that she needed. So that's just kind of an idea of what we do as a board. And we're funded by donations, but also from the county where we act as an arm of the county. We're not a 501(c)(3). We're considered a government agency. So that's just kind of how that works. So, April being Child Abuse Awareness Month, we all want, we want everyone in the community to be aware of the issue. There was forty-nine confirmed victims of child abuse in Hockley County this year. So, we would love for that number to be lower. So, we're hoping that bringing awareness to this issue would be an important step for prevention. So, as the President of the Hockley County Child Welfare Board, I wanted to let you know our mission statement. We strive to develop a program for response to the protection and care of dependent or neglected children within the community, and to encourage and promote activities, especially including prevention and awareness. Programs that will benefit all children who are in need of charitable or social services. One of the best ways to do this is to create, is to create a community that fosters a safe and loving environment. This takes all of us on the state, county, city, school districts, churches, and neighborhoods to come together to protect and advocate for children who cannot advocate for themselves. So, that's all I've got for you guys. Thank you for having me.
That talent. Now, we'll read the proclamation, and if you want pictures afterwards, we'll be whatever you would like.
Yes. Yes, that would be great.
Whereas the children thrive in safe, stable nurturing families, and whereas while it is critical to build a system that supports families when they are in a crisis, intentionally supporting families before they are in a crisis is essential to preventing the abuse and maltreatment of our children. And whereas child maltreatment is still a significant public health issue in communities that lack accessible support and resources can experience increased risk factors that lead to child abuse and neglect. And whereas the month of April is dedicated to recognizing the critical work being done in our state and community to support families before a crisis occurs, offering accessible lifelines that mitigate the challenges they face. And whereas child abuse prevention occurs every day throughout the diligent work and tireless advocacy undertaken by families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies to support children and families in our community in every community across the Lone Star State. And whereas child abuse prevention cannot be taken to one community, agency, or system, but we must all work together to strengthen our communities and build localized supports that are accessible, contribute to the well-being of the entire community, and keep children and families safe and together. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Breann Buckskemper, by virtue of authority that sit in me as the Mayor of the City of Levelland, do hereby proclaim, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Levelland. Encourage all citizens to work hard to create positive, healthy environments for our children, the future leaders of our city, state, and nation. In official recognition, whereof, I hereby fix my signature of this, the seventh day of April, 2025. Wonderful. All right. Talen, you want to come up here and cancel something down there and take? Thank you for the announcement. We'll stand back behind and we'll have. Yes. Yeah, all down here back behind.
Are you reading?
Jamie? I figured I should just leave it closer to Mayor. I was like real far. At this time, we'll have statements by citizens. We have two. First up, we'll have a Mr. Sean Anderson. And just to remind you of the rules, Mr. Anderson, I know you know, but it'll be three minutes. If you'll please state your name, your, your address, and then the timer will begin. Thank you for joining us.
Sean Anderson, 30812 Street. What research did the council conduct on the privacy implications and health consequences associated with smart meter technology? SMART, Surveillance Monitoring Analysis Reporting Technology. Smart meters are not only health hazards, they are surveillance devices that collect and transmit data continuously, which can reveal patterns about individual utility usage that correlates with daily routines and activities. The detailed data collected twenty-four seven can be used to infer when people shower, cook, use the bathroom, and when they are and are not home. The U.S. Department of Energy has confirmed that data harvested by smart meters will be very detailed and invasive. The DOE report specifically stated that information collected by smart meters can reveal personal details about the lives of consumers, such as their daily schedules, including times when they are at or away from home or asleep, whether their homes are equipped with alarm systems, whether they own expensive electronic equipment, and whether they use certain types of medical equipment. All of this smart meter data is archived and utility companies can relay this information to a third party, or this data has the potential to be hacked by a third party. The council has absolutely no right to install a two-way communication system that is sending microwave pulses to the next meter over, transmitting data about my utility usage and in-home activities. This is a direct violation of my health and individual privacy. The Fourth Amendment implies protection against invasion of privacy. Smart meter systems generate radio frequency radiation to wirelessly communicate with other meters, and the utility private and this wireless communication network is increasing the amount of radiation indoors, outdoors, and throughout a neighborhood. The council is responsible for undermining the health of Levelland citizens. Radio frequency radiation is a biologically active electromagnetic exposure that is absorbed into our bodies. So, how do you think this is going to affect children with underdeveloped brains and thin skulls? The Santa Cruz California County Board of Supervisors declared smart electric and water meters to be health hazards, safety, and consumer fraud risk. The Santa Cruz County Public Health Department issued a report titled Health Risks Associated with Smart Meters. The report notes that evidence is accumulated on the results of exposure to radio frequency radiation generated by smart meters, including increased permeability of the blood-brain barrier, harmful effects on harmful effects on sperm and double-strain breaks in DNA, which could lead to cancer development. Dr. Martin Paul, Professor Emeritus of Biochemistry at Washington State University, provided testimony at the Massachusetts Senate in 2017 on the health effects.
Thank you for joining us.
I do not consent to a smart meter. You are destroying the lives of Levelland's health as well as their privacy. Am I dying?
Yes, sir. You're doing it. Thank you.
Take all that, destroy their health, and violate their privacy.
Next, we have Ms. Larissa Howard. Ms. Howard, thank you for coming. Same rules, three minutes to speak. If you'll, you can start with your name and your address, and thank you for joining us tonight.
My name is Larissa Howard. I live at 710-15th Street in Newtown. I'm not quite as upset as the guy before me, but I do have concerns about smart meters. There are statistics out there that show all kinds of things. And being on a grid like that, if we are struck with any kind of attacks, EMPs, they will shut down the entire grid, and we do have concerns. Those that do, do have these concerns, if they refuse the smart meters or charged $160 for that smart meter, or for them to come buy and read your meter. We have been since 2002 a free market, which means that we've been able to invite any company into Levelland that we wanted. So, all we need is incentives. We can get other electric companies that are nearby, those that are in Lubbock. Those that are, we've got five miles outside of town in Sundown. Shouldn't be too hard to get them in. I see no reason not to. It seems like that's the only reason why we haven't gotten it in is nobody's brought it up. I don't, I don't know any other reason. The park funds, I've been curious about that. I think we've had a lot of people. I talked to a few people, the city manager, where the park funds have been going. We've been having plans for six or seven years now to get splash pads and other things done to these parks. We've not seen much change, not in the city parks, not into the small parks where our kids play. Sorry. I would like to work with the city more. I think that those that are part of the community need to be more involved. I don't want to be angry. I don't want to come up here and yell. I just want to work with you guys, any way we can, volunteer work, whatever we can do. I talked to the city manager. They said that we don't have a volunteer line that we can call up and get signed on to do whatever we can to help. But I don't want to put it all on you. I want to take some of it too. And I think the rest of us agree. They just need to know how to get in contact, how to get, you know, in contact with you guys to work anything. We don't know how to do any of this stuff. I'm new to all of this. And all it took was calling and asking a question. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Thank you so much. Thank you. That concludes our statements by citizens. We'll move on to the first item on the agenda to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of March 17, 2025, regular meeting, and the March 24, 2025, special joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting on March 17, 2025, regular meeting, and March 24, 2025, special joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. The second item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action on a circus permit appeal. Ms. Corley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's okay. I'm going to call you up here in a second, Gaston. So, one of the exciting parts of my job are the various permits that my office is required to deal with. If you didn't know, I would be the place you'd get a taxi permit, just so you know. But if you want to have a circus inside the city limits of Levelland, you have to come to the city secretary. We have to have a chat. And so, we did. We had a chat with Gaston and Julian. So, Gaston has a circus that he wants to bring to town. He wants to have it on Julian Asparza's Tommy's Machine Works property. And we, we chatted about that. We kind of got some statistics, sent the building inspector out to look and make some measurements. Per our ordinance, those types of events can't happen if, they have to be farther than 300 feet from a residence. And the measurements simply don't work out. The math didn't work out, so we denied the permit. They're closer than 300 feet to the nearest residence. Now, in your agenda packet, I included Gaston's application. I included an email from Mr. Asparza saying that they would like to appeal the decision, which they absolutely, absolutely have the right to do. And then I gave you a couple of maps with my very crude, awful drawings. I'm sorry. Sorry you had to look through the drawings, but the, the drawings of the property to show you where it was in proximity to the residences. I know that these guys would love to, to talk to you about their appeal. So, if you don't have any questions for me, I'd be happy to turn it over to Julian and Gaston. Just so you know, the reason we did deny that was because of the proximity to the residence.
Following that, we're. Andrea.
Hello, I'm Junior.
Yes, I'm Julian. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
For joining us tonight.
Like she said, we kind of bring a circus. We have other events we bring, so we're used to crowds. And, you know, I don't remember the last time a circus was in town. So, that being said, here's Gaston.
Done. Oh, that's too many.
Hello, hi. My name is Gaston. And first thing, and I apologize because I come here dressed like this because I take it out the circus in plain view. And thank you for inviting me, and I would like to talk with you. It's the first time if I come here with my circus, this is a very, very small circus. We have a show for the kids. And we have a channel on TikTok. We made videos viral. Today is viral because we help children with cancer here. And, and that's it. I would like to put my circus here. If you say yes, I have free tickets for everyone here.
Have a conversation with Mr. Asparza?
Yes.
And so, I know you're by definition saying it's a circus, but per my conversation with you, Julian, there are no animals. Is that still correct?
Yes, we don't have, the only animal I have in the circus is my mother-in-law. That's it.
Yeah, so if I, if I understand, it's an acrobatic show?
Yes, I have a guy from America who has all talents. He's on twelve. He's a handstand. He's my son. I have another woman. She's a flytrap piece. She's the only woman in the world make triple somersault. But it's all my kids.
Right?
The circus we set up is only my kids, me, my wife, and two, two friends helped me to set up the circus.
I just wanted to point that out because in my mind, when I first heard circus, I was, you think elephants and lions and.
No, no, no.
And no rides, which is in the.
It's very small tent, you know. Normally, the circus have a big tent and, and maybe for a thousand people, but we have only 120 chairs. It's only for, it's very small, you know, but it's a good show.
Mayor, the only problem we have is proximity to a.
Proximity to a residence.
An admission from the family. That's how I came back here. Much like to give you a coffee.
Okay.
And.
For Asparza.
And you know, our show is very early, no late. We make the show early. And if you, if you want to see my flyer, can I give you my flyer?
Sorry, sorry. Oh, okay, yes. You look better than me.
Oh, no, you're okay.
Well, the free tickets. No, the only food I, we're selling in the circus is canned Coke and popcorn, no hot food like pizza, hot dog, nothing like, like this.
So, we can grant an exception to the residency.
Is that how we would word this later? Is that?
Yeah, it'd be essentially a variance.
A variance to the ordinance. Council, have any questions?
I'm going to, we, uh, grant a variance so we can have a circus.
Is that microphone on? You on, Bill? Would you send that again into the?
Yeah, okay. I move to the council, uh, provide a variance so we can have the circus. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries, and a circus will happen. Welcome to Levelland.
Yeah. It's their first time to have a circus here.
Yeah, you always bring great things.
You do. Thank you all for.
Thank you.
Thank you, darling.
The third, the third item on the agenda will be to consider and take necessary action to award a bid for a six-inch portable pump for the Water Department. Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bless you.
I'm probably taking my kids to the circus.
No.
It's all the fun we're going to have.
It's all fun.
Yeah, that precious.
That may not, to that may not.
Mine's not quite near as exciting.
Hard to top.
It's kind of low-key. All, all we're asking is for a six-inch portable pump for the Water Department. We're asking that you award it to Xylem Dewatering in the amount of $56,202.25.
And of course, this has come before council before. We tabled this to bring it back now. I learned all about these pumps. I learned what wet prime is and the other kind and completely understand why we need the one that you don't have to put the water into. So, any discussion on this pump?
That is the better pump.
Yes, it's the pump that you do not have to put the water in in the freezing cold weather and that you don't forget to put the water in.
For mayor, I'm going to, council will approve the purchase of a six-inch pump for the Water Department in the amount of $56,000, what is this, fifty-six-two?
We have a second by Councilman Ledesma, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action to approve ordinance 10092 on a second reading, instituting a zoning change for, from industrial B2 business district for the following locations.
Mayor, and member council, this is the second reading of this ordinance, and our city attorney was very disappointed. He didn't get to read it the first time, so he is here to read this as an auctioneer for y'all this evening.
Bo Decker. Mess it up.
This is ordinance number 1092, which is an ordinance amending ordinance 635, which is the zoning ordinance for the City of Levelland. Whereas the City Council for the City of Levelland, Texas, has jurisdiction under the Constitution laws of the state of Texas to set forth zoning ordinances and regulations for public health, safety, morals, and general welfare for protecting and preserving places in areas of historical, cultural, and architectural importance and significance, and to promote a harmonious, convenient, workable relationship among land uses. Whereas the city has requested that the zoning of the designated properties be changed from industrial to B2 general business district. And, uh, following the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, notice of the time and place of a public hearing on the proposal before the city council was published in the local newspaper at least fifteen days prior to the date of the public hearing. Uh, whereas on March 17, 2025, the City Council of the City of Levelland conducted a public hearing for each piece of property separately on the recommended zoning change in the council chambers at City Hall. The, whereas the City Council of the City of Levelland finds that amending the ordinance by changing zoning from industrial to B2 generous general business district, the property described below to be reasonable and beneficial for public health, safety, morals, general welfare, and public interest of the citizens of Levelland. In accordance with Section 9.519 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Levelland, a change in zoning from industrial to B2 general business district, properties as follows, 513 East Highway 114, 515 East Highway 114, 601 East Highway 114, 701 East Highway 114, 703 East Highway 114, 707 East Highway 114, 1303 East Highway 114, 1305 East Highway 114, 1307 East Highway 114. The zoning map of the City of Levelland is set forth in 9.504 of the Code of Ordinances would be amended to reflect these reference zoning changes. would be amended to reflect these reference zoning changes. So that that is what's before you. I think y'all have heard before. I mean, the whole idea was to increase the possible uses of this land. This was done, it was brought forth by the city as opposed to a to a single or multiple landowners, but the idea was to give maximum flexibility for development. Hopefully, it would be a good thing for all involved.
Definitely. We don't need any more industrial in that area.
I move that we approve ordinance number 1092 on second reading, instituting the zoning change from industrial to B2 business district for those locations that.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action on updates to Chapter 12, Parks and Lake Areas, Section 12.203, Prohibitions of the City of Levelland Code of Ordinances on a first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring to you tonight an amendment for our park ordinances in 1093. A little background on this before I pass it over to Slater. This has been pretty much a rule of ours for for quite some time, but we'd like to put it in ordinance tonight and get the process started. But any bounty house, structure, things like that damages the turf, stakes damage the irrigation. So we're really looking at protecting our turf, our irrigation, and also the safety of anybody in our parks. So we're looking at officially adding that into our ordinance to not allow bounty houses, even though that is a park rule as of right now. And then the next one was item 16 is to construct or erect any type of item or structure in the park. And basically, those are temporary tents and things like that. We have a lot of people that will stake up tents and leave the stakes. They become mower mowing hazards. They become tripping hazards, and then also just hazards in general to to everybody else out there. So just going to pass this over to Slater now. Do you have any questions for me?
Mayor and members of council, this item has also mentioned about the RV rules. You will see those in an ordinance form at the April 28.
Okay.
And and one other thing, just from background, from being around a lot of different cities and just watching the national news, you continue to see issues with the bounce houses as they become untethered and elevate, and you see injuries. And so that's one of the issues. And, you know, you can require specialized insurance, but that's just not something that happens and is really available. So there's a safety issue of some significance as well. But ordinance number 1093, an ordinance amending the city of Levelland, Texas Code of Ordinances, 1997, Chapter 12, Parks and Lake Areas, by amending Article 12.203 entitled Prohibitions to amend and clarify what acts are prohibited in the city parks and lake areas, providing for enforcement, providing an effective date, providing a savings clause, providing a repealer, and providing for publication. Whereas it is generally recognized throughout the country that parks and other recreational areas should be safe for all users of such areas. And whereas it is the intent of the city council, the city of Levelland, to improve and protect the public's health by making city parks and other recreational areas a safe and enjoyable place for everyone, now therefore be it ordained by the city of Levelland, Texas, that the Code of Ordinances be amended by modifying Article 12.203 entitled Prohibitions as follows. This will be a new subsection or subsection 15. So the the first 14 will remain, as is 15 will read erect place or use any inflatable structure designed for adults or children to jump and play on or in, commonly referred to as a bouncy bounce house or inflatables. 16. Construct or erect any type of structure of any type of item or structure, including but not limited to tents or shade devices that require the use of stakes being placed into the ground to secure the item.
Thank you.
And just one other thing that I don't think was mentioned. One of the other issues with those stakes is with your irrigation systems and the possible compromise of those which we continue to see. Any questions for me?
For me, it seems pretty straightforward to me. Any questions from council? We'll need a motion to approve the amendments. I move to approve amendments to Chapter 12 of the city of Lovely and Code of Ordinance. The motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number six, City Manager Report, Staff Updates, Project Updates, Staff Citizen Recognition, Items of Community Interest, which no action will be taken.
Mayor and members of council, our water meter project has begun in full swing today. So we're going to be working with that and watching the project very, very closely. We know that there will be some snafus along the way, but staff is prepared to address any challenges that come along and make good decisions as we move forward. One of the exciting things that is is occurring, and we're working with Senator Perry's office and Representative King's office. They have both proposed a bill to amend the slow down, move over bill, which primarily has all first initially dealt with law enforcement, and then it moved into highway construction workers. The provision that they have added is they're now including animal control officers, animal services officers, so that if they are on the side of the road working, that you need to slow down and move over. This bill has made it through committee. It's working its way through the floor. City staff has asked for them that when this bill passes and if the governor is amenable to it, he's got a lot on his plate and a lot of requests. But if he will do a signing ceremony, we have reached out to both families and advise them that if we do get this ceremony, that we will pay to get them down to Austin. It may be a 24-hour notice. It may be a 48. It may be a couple of days. We don't know. We don't know where this bill is going. This time of the year, a lot of bills get kind of moved around to get other bills through there that are greater priorities in their mind. So we're excited and we're appreciative of this. It is a great way to honor and and respect both of those individuals. And as I've told both families, I said, we will be building a new animal shelter within the next year or so. And when we complete that facility, we will incorporate something as well to honor and to remember them as well. What that is yet, we don't know because we'll we want to make sure that the family participates in in that process with us as well. Easter egg hunt is Saturday, April 12, beginning at 10 a.m. I know Dustin and his crew could use some help. There's about 8,000 eggs. It takes a little while to put them out and microseconds to pick them all back up. So it's really a fun, fun morning for everybody. The South Plains Community Action Association partnering with Department of Health on a free measles vaccination clinic and testing site at Spartan Transportation here in Levelland. The clinic is open from 10 to 6 every day through April 14. As the cases continue to grow, I won't be surprised if that doesn't get extended somewhere along the way. Mr. Powell, thank you and your agency for doing that for our community and for our county. Thank you very much for for that. Early voting begins April 22nd, runs through the 29th. Again, we have one contested election for council District D or Letter D, and then we also have the charter amendments. If you got your Levelland newspaper, you probably needed someone to help you carry it in the House because our charter amendments were inside that edition this past week. Spring cleanup was moved from last Saturday. It's to this Saturday. So this Saturday's going to be very, very full. But if you can, the spring cleanup will begin at the Best Western. Last weekend, even despite the weather, we had a phenomenal event occur within town of just our code compliance department, Keep Levelland Beautiful, and various contractors all got together and and help take care of a property. And I think that there's kind of a phase two trying to be put together as well. That's what makes Levelland awesome is is we see a need and we don't ignore it. We figure out ways to take care of it. And I know there's a bunch more out there, and we're going to do our best to to help those where we can. We can't do all of them, but we're going to do our best to to find groups, find people to help us tackle those. On April 26, Community Wide Planning Day, Lemonade Day, and Downtown Cleanup is going to be occurring as well. Tomorrow is the day that they move to alter the intersection at 385 and Avenue H. Have you seen the barricades and the barrels? It could be interesting to see how all that comes together. I think the newspaper is going to be out there with camera and just take whatever photos that they possibly can. So the Texas Economic Development Council is sponsoring a sales tax workshop in Lubbock on August 22. That is a Friday. I think we have registered every member of council on both boards and several staff members. I know that's way off, but we wanted to secure our spots. If you can't make it, we'll find some people to go. But I think it's it's good for us to go and learn this, but it's also even more important when we get a state organization hosting a workshop in our backyard to try to get there so we can get future ones here as well.
That's in person, not.
That's in person. Yes, ma'am. And our next council meeting is April 28, 6 p.m. We're skipping the 21st and going to the 28. And some other news, some of y'all have heard, but I have asked Justin Balduruss, our Economic Development Director, to step into the place as an interim Assistant City Manager for our city when Joe leaves the end of this week. And I've also asked Eli Kulunga to step in as interim building official as Joe is transitioning out. Well, both of them expressed an interest several months ago, and we've had conversations. We'll continue to have conversations with him about the transition, the responsibilities of the job. Justin will be baptized by fire as I will be out for the next several days. But I believe our city is in great hands, and I know that everything will be okay. Anything else, councils? Ms. Corley? Don't have anything else, Mayor? We can go to executive now, or if you want to move the other item up and then go in executive later, whichever one you want, but.
I think it'd be in respect of the gentleman Park Hill's time to move that up. The goal will move items number seven and eight down. And right now, we will begin item number 10, which is a discussion with Park Hill Engineer regarding construction bids received for the wastewater treatment plant.
You might have like a 10-minute recess since we threw them off. Give them time to get together.
Okay, so we will recess at this point in time for about 10 minutes. Let's show Okay, so we will recess at this point in time for about ten minutes. Let's show it at six forty. We'll come back at six fifty. Okay, so recess from six forty to six fifty.
I think it'd be in respect of the gentleman Park Hill's time to move that up. The goal will move items number seven and eight down, and right now we will begin item number ten, which is a discussion with Park Hill Engineers regarding construction bids received for the wastewater treatment. One second, guys, apologize. Here we go, yeah. She didn't even know. You're fine. That's fine.
What I said, exactly what I said.
Are you surprised?
We're ready. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor Council, for speaking with us tonight to bring you the results of the bids for the wastewater treatment plant. I've printed off, I sent, I think you guys all have a copy of the presentation. If it works, okay, I can just flip through that. Feel free to stop me at any time that you want to ask questions. But one, to give you an overview of where we are. And so the second page just shows, we'll go through the project schedule review. These projects are long and in-depth, and it's kind of like, you know, when your mother-in-law comes and stays with you, it's like, when are you, when are we going to be done here? So we'll talk about that, talk about the bidding process, what we went through to go through that process. The E O P C and the bid results. We'll talk about bidding options, kind of what what to do next potentially. There's some options. Anticipated funding needs. Then I'll show you at the very back, if you really want to dive into details, we have included the bid tabulation and some potential value engineering items, should the council want to consider those. Just because there's so many bid items, there's eighty-three bid items, just to go through that. Again, as as much as or as little as you would like to, were available. Okay, so we talked about project schedule. One of the things I did when I, and again, I'm again, I'm Brian Stevens with Park Hill, lead our treatment team, and so worked with Daniel Alvis, he's been your engineer. And I sat down with Daniel and I said, let's start from the beginning, you know, when did we sign the design contract to get started and do this work? And so the design contract that we have with y'all was executed November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. You'll notice there's four or five sets of deliverables in Exhibit B, which is all of the different things we did from the preliminary engineering design report, the basis of design, preliminary and final engineering and all those phases. And in all those phases, there are days associated with those. And I really appreciate staff helping us. This is the, these, these are the days based on the contract, but we're able to get through approximately seven months earlier than this states because city staff has been really great trying to accelerate our reviews. So as we submitted a basis of design report, for example, a contract might say there's sixty days to review that with the city. We were seeing shorter review times, and so we were able to move on to the next task quicker. So we're able to get this out by March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And so the other thing that we, one of the key issues we had was permitting. You'll look on the right-hand side. Of course, with this project, we have to get T C Q to approve that. And so after our contract was executed, we worked really hard for six months to get our basis of design. That's that first initial big binder document that showed exactly what the plant was going to look like and all the components and all those things. And we got comments back from staff, and once we got that set, we sent that permit in. We sent that in June twenty-nine of twenty twenty-three. And so you'll see that we got the permit approved November eighth, twenty twenty-four. And then they will would not approve our design plans for construction until the permit was approved. So the what the permit, you have the permit, and then you have the design plan. They approved that two weeks later. And so a key issue here is permitting. We've, T C Q has had really a big staff crunch. We've had, we call them weekly. We have a whole list of clients' permits, ten, twelve, fifteen permits that are ready to get, you know, we're waiting to get approved. We have one as as an example, City of La Mesa, where we've called for the last six months, and the guy tells me, I have a hundred permits. You've moved from a hundred to seventy-two, you know, you're. And so anyway, permitting was something we we worked really hard on and were able to to get through as fast as possible. So so we were able to get everything ready to bid project by January twenty twenty-four. So change pages here. On the on the bidding phase, we advertised this on a national website called CivCast. Back in the day, we might call local four or five contractors and say, hey, we have a project in Loveland, and and that used to work really well, but for a project of the size, we knew we needed to get national recognition, state recognition. So we advertised this on CivCast. We had two hundred and sixteen folks download plans. So it got some really good interest. We had, so we thought, so we had twenty-eight of those were general contractors. So those are not just contractors from here locally, but from the D F W area, from Houston, from others. They looked at this. We were, we were disappointed. We had two bidders bid this project. We actually, there was a third bidder that promised to bid this job. We we pushed the job back a week, so he would have the chance to bid the job. He didn't show up on bid day, you know, it was really frustrating for us. You can see the two bid numbers there from M H Civil Constructors out of Amarillo, Texas, and from Brown McKee Contractors out of Lubbock were the two bid numbers that we received. All right, so the next page is the opinion probable cost. When we started this back in November twenty-two, we had an original opinion of probable cost of sixteen million, and that was presented to council of construction cost. In January twenty twenty-five, so two years later, two and a half years later, after Daniel went through, we've had all that design and putting all this together, we've sent to council an opinion of twenty-point-four million dollars back here a few months ago. In the process of bidding, Daniel talked to, and he and I sat down and talked about this, he he talked to many, many of those two hundred and sixteen folks that were looking at this. And so his phone just was ringing off the hook. And he has these eighty-three bid items. He, he was had pulled up that estimate from January, and he was looking at each item as someone called and said, hey, I think concrete's going to be another fifty dollars a yard. I think this is going to be this. I think, you know, and so he was just trying to figure out where we were. So he was adjusting that estimate over that sixty-day period to see where, you know, because people, he's getting all this feedback from contractors. So he's like, well, you know, this is.
This is a designated sixty-day period, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. There's a designated sixty-day period from when we advertise the project to when the bids are opening, when the bids.
During that time, you got phone calls from various contractors or whatever, and they raised the price.
Right, well, and they they're just saying, hey, you know, you know, I can use this concrete subcontractor. He's from Lubbock. He's telling me it's going to be X dollars a yard. He, you know, what's your budget? You know, and so they're just talking. I mean, Daniel got five to ten phone calls a day given on average for that sixty-day period.
Mr. Stevens, just for the record, was that ever communicated with City of Loveland that we believe these prices were going to be higher?
I think that, well, I know that in January, we we communicated that that four million dollar increase. In that sixty-day period, I do not know that any phone calls were made.
In January, we we expected to be around twenty million dollars.
Yes, sir. That's right. So did we. We thought that it would be twenty-point-four million. We had thirty days in, I said, we have two hundred and sixteen people looking at this. We have twenty-eight general contractors looking at this. We are, we should get five or six general contractors to come and bid this project. I mean, that's just that there, it's a great project. I don't know what, you know, and so, but we did not. We had two contractors. You know, I, the two contractors were local. They're one one's from Amarillo, one's from Lubbock. We called the the four or five general contractors from Dallas, and they just said, and we're busy. We, it's not a big enough project to come to level, to Lubbock, to Loveland. We're, we have plenty of work here. We're busy, is what we keep hearing. I think it's, you know, again, I think I I was surprised by that, to have two hundred and sixteen folks look at it, to have twenty-eight general contractors and have two show up on bid day. But that's what we've heard back, is they were busy. They were, and and just, they were hoping it would be a bigger project. I was like, I think it's pretty big the way it is, you know. It's a pretty good-sized project.
Ten million dollars more than what we originally thought in twenty-two. I don't know how we missed that. I don't know how we missed ten million dollars from the time we first talked about this in twenty-two to two twenty-six million dollars. That's six million over what we expected, and we can't pull that out of our ass pocket.
Mr. Stevens, you and I and two other of your colleagues have had a very passionate conversation about this. And I appreciate y'all coming back out here tonight to speak with us, but I've, I spent a lot of my weekend on this. I involved some other people that are smarter at building things than me, because I've never built anything, and I'm just going to be honest with you and the citizens of Loveland. I'm glad the newspaper's here. We're back in a corner. Our sewer plant needed fixed years ago. We have to build a new one. We can't, in my opinion, rebid this.
Where do we get this million dollars?
We've been put in this corner, and we have a six million dollar problem. And it was just dumped in our lap. And we're the ones that have to figure out how to pay for it. And I appreciate your work on the value engineering, and I'll be honest, I called that clearance engineering. And when I go through those items, there's very little you can find there. I mean, I appreciate your effort in putting them together, but most of it needs to be there. I mean, we don't want a a junky sewer plant either. Like I told you, every single new business that's coming through our town, and they're coming thankfully by leaps and bounds, is an additional toilet. And and they have to work. And we're the ones ultimately responsible for this, and it looks like we didn't do our job. We did our job.
Brian, is it Brian?
Yes, sir.
What would you do if you were in our place?
We know, the 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 next slide is your options. And so I'll just jump to that. I, I my, my gut is to say, you know, the economy's slowing down a little bit. There's a lot of contractors out there. Would they take another look? You know, would they rebid this?
Will our sewer plant last that long? I mean, hell, it took two years to get this, this point.
We gamble on that.
And it says here that y'all were seven months ahead of contract and schedule. We first talked about this, we would already been well under construction. I don't, I don't buy seven months ahead of anything.
And so I, so that's my.
But I want I want an answer to that.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't want to just keep pushing off the well, let's look at what our options are. Why did we miss that?
Miss what, sir?
Right here, it says, Park Hill provided deliverables seven months ahead of contract and schedule. We anticipated to already be under construction. That when it was presented to us, we we should have already been under construction from our first agreement.
I just, again, I looked at the contract to see what it said, because I, you know, it's been about three years since I, you know, two and a half years since I saw that, Mr. Stevens.
Do we have enough eyes on the project? Do we have enough Park Hill resources?
Yes, I've I've had over forty people work on this project. I I am a hundred percent proud of the plans and specifications. It's going to be a great project. It's going to be a great wastewater plant.
If we can afford it.
I think the council did too, probably a couple of years ago.
What what I cannot control is what's happening in the market. I don't control market conditions. I can't make a contractor bid a project. I can't.
Isn't that Park Hill's job is to monitor the market and what those costs are going to be? It's not ours.
We, our job is to to use our best knowledge that we have of of the market's going to be, and that's why we increased that price four million dollars in January. We knew it was going up. We knew that it was not going to be the original amount that we thought. Did I think that it was going to be where it landed? Absolutely not. I I thought with two hundred folks with plans, I thought with twenty-eight general contractors, we would get some competition. If you have a ten percent swing in four or five contractors, you mean, you have two or three million dollars. That's that's swinging. That that that's typically what we see. We didn't get that competition between the contractors for some reason. I I don't, I don't understand why. They're telling me that they're busy. They're telling me that it's not a big enough project. And so I I disagree. I think it's a great project.
And that's the twenty-six million I'm sorry, Jamie. The engineering deal is two-point-nine million. Still struggling with that.
So from November of twenty-two, you're saying that's why you let us know first thing in January that it upped four million? So we can, we can respect that from November twenty-two to January twenty-five. How is it now another six million just since January? That's two months. It only jumped four million in a year and a half, or however many long that is.
So no, that's a great question. So the, so up until this point, these have been engineers' opinions of probable costs. And so Daniel and I sit down and we say, this is what we think this is going to cost. On March thirteenth, on bid day, that's the actual hard bid from a contractor. That's what they interpret that. And so again, that's what we do is we give opinions of probable costs. We don't give hard bids. We can't control the market. We can't control what, how many, you know, what, how many, you know, uh, what they pay folks, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the difference, uh, Ms. McCabe is that, is that it's the hard bid versus the.
Have you ever seen a swing this big?
We've, we're, yeah, we've seen, I mean, the last two or three years, we've seen swings all over. Um.
What did those communities do? Cause we're struggling to figure it out.
Uh, like, for example, a couple of months ago, City Lubbock did a, uh, they had one bidder. It was a major pump station on the west side of town. It was, uh, twenty five million estimate came in at thirty five million. It was ten million over. Um, and it was from the contractor who we were hoping to get here. Uh, and so, um.
Did you call him? Did you ask him?
We called, we called him. Yes, we called him and asked him. We, Daniel, again, we've, we called, we called quite a few. I, I, I don't know the exact number, but most of these twenty eight, um, to tell him better. Yes. Um, but you know, Lubbock has seen that, um, it's, uh, contractors, I don't know if there's a compressing of the supply and demand of contractors, and then that coupled with pricing increases and, and those things.
It started happening in the market. Maybe a phone call to us that, hey, word to the wise, this may get out of control. That's what we wanted.
Yes, man. You know, I think we, we came in January, uh, he started to see these numbers. We, you know, um, I guess we could have delayed the bid and come and ask you and said, hey, you know, we're hearing these numbers. We're hearing these numbers come in, but at the end of the day, we don't know what the numbers are until everyone bids, right? Until everyone puts their pen to paper. And so, um, because we, again, we were hoping we would have more competition. We would hoping to have three or four or five more of these contractors to show up and, and to want to bid this work. Um, you know, this, this is, you know, I, you know, again, I understand it's, it's horrible news. Um, you know.
I'm going to point, I don't want to speak for everybody here, but for me, I don't believe anybody's pointing fingers saying that y'all should have, you have control over these. Nobody's, we get it. I, all of us understand the economy's crazy. Things are going up. What my concern is, is how are we supposed to explain to our citizens that a project that started, I wasn't even on council when y'all went under this contract in November of twenty two. This project that they approved in November of twenty two is now six million dollars more. They're going to be mad. What are we supposed to tell them? I mean, sorry, it jumped six million. I mean, what do you do?
It's just, it's, it's unfortunate. I mean, it is the.
Park Hill had the pulse on what the prices should be. Should we have more than a thirty five percent? Idea of what's, this isn't the only project you guys got going.
If not, you can help.
The market trends were, it would look to me like if you're, I mean, you're a reputable.
Yes, absolutely.
Engineering firm. Why did, 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 did that go unnoticed? I mean, because all of a sudden that day it didn't jump thirty five percent.
No.
It should have been a trend in the morning. I mean, don't you have some barriers that if it exceeds?
I guess I quit.
Go ahead. Concerned.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, again.
Passed on to your plan.
Yes. I mean, again, we, we, uh, we, we, we moved that estimate at four million in January. We heard, again, we had all this information. These, these contractors were, were telling us this. Now, on, in bid, in bid times, we hear lots of stories. We hear, oh my gosh, it's going to be over budget. Then we hear it's going to be under, but you know, we hear all these stories because all these contractors, they'll play games with each other about who's going to show up and who's not, and who's going to bid X and who's going to bid Y. And we, we talked and I was like, you know, there's twenty eight general contractors. There's got to be, you know, we talked with Mr. Fisher about, we've got to have three bidders. We got to have four bidders. We'd love to have five bidders. Um, again, we pushed the date back a week to try to get a third bidder to get another data point to see where, you know, when, when you look at all these bid items. Um, it, it's, uh, yes, it's frustrating. And, um, you know, as we, when we design plants like this, these are two and three year projects. And so as we, as we, we're always updating our cost opinions, you know, um, but we are not, um, leading edge on, you know, what a contractor's going to bid tomorrow. You know, we're, we have to do, we have to work on the data that we have six months ago, twelve minutes ago, eighteen months.
Only project you got. I, I guess that's my, my frustration is you've got multiple projects. So you should have seen that trend. I would have thought that you, you guys.
Yes, we.
Surely you do communicate.
Yes.
And, and, and see those trends because I'm sure somebody's bid opening was two weeks before this one. And someone was two weeks before that one. So those trends should have been showing something.
It's a good point.
Maybe we should have gotten an alert on that. Maybe somebody's antenna should have went up and said, whoa, wait a minute.
Well, I know we talked about that in January. We, that's why we moved that up in January because I said, there's, we, we talked about this is significant movement, you know, um. Did I think it would come in where it did? No, I, 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 I think, um.
I thought four million from November twenty two to January twenty five is not significant when you're really looking at from January twenty five to March twenty five, that's significant. So in January, I don't remember even really having a red flag raised. I remember y'all saying four thousand and I remember thinking, oh, well, it's been a year and a half. Of course, four million. Of course it's going to be higher.
I told you in our meeting, all we were told is it's fine. It's fine.
Another six million in two months? That's what, that's significant. And that was not what we were told.
Well, you know, to me, it seemed like they got together because this project, you had what, uh, contractors, twenty three contractors, general contractors?
Twenty eight, yes, sir.
Twenty eight. They got together and see, let me see, let's get the, both of us, let's get together, see when we get some more money out of them. That's what's telling me because to go up that much is, you know, on that chart of time, that's, that's, yeah, that.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, to your point, Ms. McCabe, it's a twenty percent, twenty per, percent jump from January. You're right. But again, that's the jump from opinion of probable cost to bid the bid tab. And I think my, my experience is again, you'll get a ten to fifteen percent swing when you have bids. Typically, you'll have three to five bidders, ten to fifteen percent. And so if we look at ten percent, you know, we had a twenty percent jump between the opinion and the bid. Typically you'll get a ten percent swing. And so, you know, we just didn't get that ten percent swing on this one, which is super frustrating because after, you know, two and a half years, all this work, um, you know, it's a great project.
I think it's super frustrating. If it was something we could kick down the curb, we'd go, man, that's super frustrating.
Yes.
It's not anything we can kick down the curb.
Any option other than awarding it because if we go to rebid it, we're either not going to get it or our sewer plant is going to go down. And then we've got a whole town mad.
We have people already paying for a sewer fund that supporting projects and, and we're thirty five percent over budget. We can hash it out, throw arrows all day.
Our option is to find six million dollars. Yeah, that's our choice.
And I'll forever be frustrated and I'll tell you upfront, just like I told you the other day, I would like something off the two point nine million dollars, something significant.
Okay.
And I would like our money watched like this. And so our contingency can, can be recapped. I mean, that's what we're expecting.
Yes.
How soon can you start the project? I mean, I'm tired of sitting here watching the cost go up.
Yeah. Well, that's a great question. Um, the, the, the contractor is going to hold his bid until May fifteenth. Um, and so, uh, the council could award that.
Long time in terms of waiting.
Yeah. Well, the council could, 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 uh, award that, uh, anytime between now and May fifteenth. And so we can get started as soon as you would like to, if you choose to move forward with this contract.
I think like some of them.
Have a choice.
Over a barrel here. You know, we, yeah, so we've pledged our confidence in Park Hill and here we are.
Brian, you've seen my emails. You've read them. Daniel's read them. And, and y'all heard my frustration and aggravation with this. From day one, when I came on board in October twenty fourth, I asked about this project.
Yes, sir.
Monthly basis. Cause I knew that this project was going up every month just because of we weren't communicating. City, you know, um, and through all of this mess. You know, somehow there was an OPC that comes out at twenty four million that you guys let slide out during the bid opening, which to me is more of a CYA method. He asked, you, you can hem haw all around. Mayor and I asked for Park Hill's leadership to stand up and be counted. I don't see him here. This doesn't seem like that this is a concern of Park Hill. The city of Levelland. If you would have told us in January of twenty five, you'll need to be cautious because these numbers are going up. I would not have recommended to this council, we go forward with a six million dollar meter project. Now, almost every other project's getting delayed because I'm trying to figure out how to find this money. That's not even counting. I mean, this is the construction dollars. It's twenty six million. Then yours is on top of that. So we're paying you for not doing your job. And so the city is, is the ones that are going to have to answer to our citizens. We are the ones that are going to have to go out there. We can't say it's a horrible situation. It's a bad thing. Those aren't answers. You guys fell asleep at the switch. And there's, there's no either way around this. And the mayor said it, it doesn't do us any good to point fingers. We are where we are. My job now is to find options for us to consider. Fortunately, we've generated some interest over the nineteen million we've got in the bank account. Fortunately, we've got some areas within our wastewater uh, fund that we can draw from. But I may get halfway there just in the original construction cost. I'm still going to have to find probably four million dollars, some win. I don't have that sitting in an account. So I've already told the council that we're going to have to recommend moving forward. We don't have any other option. If we reject it, then we got to go through this whole process all over again. We may get zero bidders.
Because we will offend the ones we have.
Or we'll get people to look at these numbers and go, well, that's, that's the new benchmark is twenty six million and let's go from there. So we're going to look at this in April twenty eighth, make a decision how we move forward. I'm going to continue to work with our financial advisors to see what options we have. We have very little. The twenty one sixty two that we have in the wastewater treatment improvement fund barely covers the bond payment now. If I were to have to do the whole six million, about another nine to ten dollars onto that, our community can't afford that.
No.
So we, we are in a corner. Park Hill failed, in my opinion, failed the city of Levelland. And we're the ones that are going to have to try to figure this out. We're the ones that are going to have to take it on the chin for our community.
And we can't just tell them it's frustrating.
I understand.
I think I know the answer to the question, but is Park Hill prepared to assume any monetary responsibility in this, uh, fiat pool?
Two point nine million? About it's two point nine six?
No, um, just to, Ms. Fisher, appreciate your time. Um, you know, I, I've worked with Park Hill since nineteen ninety four. Um, I worked, one of my first jobs was, was working with Kenneth Rumbow over here, uh, and Joe at, at Hickory. Um, grew up at Park Hill. I'm a partner at Park Hill. Um, I lead our treatment group. Uh, so I'm in charge. Uh, and so I, well, you know, I had two or three folks ask me, hey, can we come with y'all tonight? And I say, no, I mean, Daniel and I can handle this. We, you know, we'll take it. So you are important to us. You have been for thirty years. We, we appreciate Levelland. Um, we did not intentionally try not to communicate. We, we did not lie to you. We don't do business that way. Um.
No sense of urgency on this project.
We, we, uh, we were, we were, we designed a wastewater plant. We thought we were communicating. We, I think we were, um. The market just priced this and we don't have control over the market and it's unfortunate. Um, and so, um, you know, to your point, Mayor, uh, you know, we understand this is not fun for anyone. Uh, if you look at construction funding, uh, for engineering.
My question, I answered the.
Yeah, it's not. Will you assume any of the costs?
Yeah, yes, I'm getting, I'm getting to this point. So, um, if you look at our engineering, we have, you have seen our design funds, uh, that we've completed for the last two and a half years. We've had over forty five people working on this project. If we look at the four remaining funds, those are construction related funds. So, uh, construction face services to run weekly meetings, like as middles, the RPR inspection, uh, that's the daily inspection for the next eighteen months and so forth and so on. Um, I have told Mr. Fisher that typically we carry a fifteen percent profit on those numbers uh, to the tune of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for those amounts. Um, we will give that, you know, we'll, we'll reduce our contract for that amount and work at cost, uh, for the remainder of the project. Y'all are important to us. We're not, we're not trying to make money on you guys in addition to this thing. We, this is, uh, you know, we'll, we'll give that back.
I don't think we mind you making money. I think it's just the, uh, the nature of the way the business was conducted in this whole process. I, I just timeframes and all of those things that have come about and, you know, six million dollars and you're, you're saying seventy five thousand.
That's, that's what, that's what we have, sir. I mean, that's what we have left. So.
The one fifty five, we'll take it. But from two point nine six, I think that's about six percent if I'm rounding up. So, I'm going with that a little bit too. All right. We'll take it and we'll hold you to it. But it's six percent.
So just want that set. Penny at this point in comparison to what would we have to come up with?
Yeah. At this point, would we, would we let, um, Mr. Stevens to go through his value engineering items at the end of this, in case there's any questions?
And I, we all look through it and all of its things we need, right?
This is, I think, I'm, all of us look here. Yes.
So my understanding is what happens is the engineers have talked and, and almost been in negotiation phase. And I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that. And I think that's part of the rock and the hard place here is you almost have to accept. And see what happens. Um, why did you end up in a situation where you have the other that says, well, I didn't know we were going to negotiate.
Not fair.
The fact and, and I would come seeing with contractors, um, is, um, a lot more litigation and threat and litigation when they don't get stuff. So I think there's, there's risk.
So value engineering isn't even an option.
After we award the bid, then we can go in and discuss every line item. But we, my understanding of long conversations with players is that we have to award the bid, then we can go through it. And the company that has a low bid has been very responsive. They've reached out to me numerous times to say that they're willing to work with us. They're willing to go through this and help us find. But as you alluded to earlier, I'm, I've gone through this numerous times and I really don't find areas that if we cut, are going to really make that significant of a difference. That's what's frustrating.
My question is on the ones that say a substitute equipment will require acceptance of exceptions to design documents. Will that mean TCEQ additional approval?
No, it just, it just means.
You can't have that.
Yeah. So that's, it's great. So typically there's three or four typically really good manufacturers of such and such widget, you know, mixer or blower. Um, and so, but they all have a different way that their plug plugs into the outlet or they have a different, you know, a little bit of a different twist. It's like, uh, driving a different car. It's a little bit different. So all that statement is saying is like, you know, um, folks have been calling Daniel saying, hey, we could save you a hundred thousand dollars on this piece of equipment. And so, um, Daniel said, no, we, we, we can't talk until the project is awarded. And then we would run that cost back through the contractor to make sure that, that it, how they plug it in as an example, or how they, how that applies doesn't cost additional monies, which would, which, which deduct from that. So, um, um, but again, those would be, we would only recommend those, um, because, um, there would be a savings to y'all and we would not recommend anything that's subpar, sub quality. Um, but there are multiple manufacturers in four or five locations.
What I would say is just, just to sum it all up, we're, and, and you know.
Yes, ma'am.
We're disappointed.
Yes, ma'am.
We're very concerned. Disappointed is a, is a very simple word to, to use for this. And it will factor in, um, in our, our future engineering projects. It, it has to.
Yes.
Also told you when we met the other day, this is yours to win back. This is America. You can, this is a capitalist world.
That's me.
Um, and so our expectation is this to be the best sewer plant you've ever built. If this is awarded and it to be done with our dollars, uh, the top of your game. However, many people that have been on it, we hope you add, add more to it because this is the biggest thing I've ever been a part of and I'm not going to let it fail.
Yes, ma'am.
It can't fail.
Need to get it started fast before the other one does.
Yeah. And, and I guess our level of communication, we've put it out there in public record that we expect that to be dramatically different and better.
Absolutely. And, uh, if there's any. Absolutely. And if there's any, and I've been in contact with Mr. Fisher almost every other day here for the last two weeks. We can be in communication as much or as little. I mean, you may, you know, if, just tell us how to do that. We can communicate with the whole council, just Mr. Fisher. We can do whatever y'all.
We'll need to go through.
Yeah. Again, we can communicate as much. We don't wanna be a, we don't wanna be a thorn in anyone's side, but we can communicate as much as.
Can't afford to not let you be a thorn.
Yes, absolutely. We could do that.
So there any more discussion on this or we'll, we'll let it settle and then we will revisit the twenty-eighth on, on this? Is that correct? Does that, that we wanna proceed?
With the twenty?
Twenty-eight.
Eight?
Yes. You have been the twenty-first, he said.
Yes.
You have been the twenty-first.
Not meaning the twenty-first, meaning the twenty-eighth. Is that good for you?
Be twenty-first and the twenty? No, it's just twenty-eight.
And the bids are held until, like.
Yes, sir.
So here's what I'd recommend to the council is if y'all have questions, we know that. I mean, when you go home and you lay your head down tonight, you'll think, I wish I would have asked this, right? I didn't think to ask this. I'm confused about that. If y'all will funnel those questions probably to Justin over these next few days, we will, we will get those so that y'all can have answers so that you're ready to make a decision when you meet again as opposed to, to lacking information.
Yeah, we need to be ready to roll then.
So, but let, let's have a point person. And if, if Justin's not our person, y'all tell me, but I'm.
Oh, he nodded. He's ready.
We understand just for clarity that that needs to be Justin moving, moving forward due to some, some conflict, right?
Yes.
We just want that clear.
But yeah, y'all, the either one of, to there, and that way, we also know this. If one of you has a question, we're assuming more than one of you would have that same question, even if you don't realize that. So we'll get the information disseminated out to all of y'all. Fair?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you. Okay, that was item number ten. We will go back up to item number, item number seven to convene into executive session according with Texas Government Code five five one oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee sitting manager. And we will also convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven two to deliberate the purchase exchange lease for value of real property. And we have action after this item, Mr. Fisher? No action is anticipated and we will go into executive session at seven twenty-nine P M.
Dom, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dom.
Leland has completed its executive session on the seventh day of April 2025 at eight fifty four P M o'clock. We have no action and with that we are adjourned.
Right on.
Thank you.